All right, everyone, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right, welcome, everyone. This is the September 22 meeting of the Town of Canadegwill Planning Board. The protocol here is very simple. We go through the agenda item by item. On each item, we ask the presenter or the applicant to make a presentation regarding what they're seeking from the board. And then after the presentation, the planning board will ask questions. And once we've questioned ourselves out, we will go to the public for any comments or questions from the public, and then we'll come back to the board for any further deliberations and conclusions by the applicant, and then we'll take a vote. And we hope to do this all in good order without a... We've got 18 people, I see, on the call at least, now up to 22, so we need some order. And if you would like to speak, please raise your hand via Zoom, and Eric will recognize you and let me know so I can recognize you. And then you can say what you want to say. We would ask that if you are going to speak, you give us your name, your address, and that would be helpful to our secretary as far as recording the names of people who spoke. All right, let's go through the attendance, board members. Karen Blasey.
Here.
Ryan Stachek.
I am here, thank you.
Okay, good, Ryan. Gary Humes.
Yep, I'm here.
Bob Lacourse.
I'm here.
And Amanda Van Laket.
Here.
Okay, we have John Rotella, who's our recording secretary. Welcome back, John.
Here, thank you.
We also have Lance Brae-Ram, who's representing the MRB group, our town engineers. We are also joined this evening by our town attorney, Chris Nadler.
Hello.
And our Director of Development, Town Planner, Eric Cooper, is at the controls. There are two public hearings tonight. They've both been advertised in the Daily Messenger, according to a legal notice received, and they were advertised in the Messenger on September 11th, so they've been duly advertised. At this point, I will open the floor up to anyone out there in the virtual land who would like to say something, an item that is not on the agenda. If you want to make a comment, bring something to our attention, now's the time to do it. Otherwise, we'll proceed into the applications. Okay, I assume everyone's here for an application that's on the agenda. With that being said, let's move on to the first public hearing. Is Jim Fay here? Is he on the call yet? Okay, I was gonna try to get Jim out of the way because we had sort of not told him that he was on the agenda last meeting, and he didn't realize it, so I thought I'd give him the courtesy of putting him first up on this agenda. But since he's not with us, we will do as I said. We'll move on to the public hearings. And I will open a public hearing for Gerber Homes and BME Engineering, representing the Malis Family Trust, owners of property at 3215 Daisy Way. They are seeking amended final subdivision approval regarding the finished first floor elevation of the dwelling, which was constructed more than 12 inches higher than was approved. So someone from BME want to make the presentation?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. My name is James Kritikos. I'm with BME. John with Gerber Homes is also here with me this evening. As the chairman just kind of noted, we're looking to obtain an approval on the finished grade of a house, which had deviated more than 12 inches from the original approved plan. This is located at Lot 56 of the Old Brookside subdivision. The address of the property is 3215 Daisy Way. Pretty simple. What occurred out here is basically the homeowner, when the house is being built, elected to have a couple additional features, additional course in the basement, as well as a zero entry into the garage for ADA accessibility. So between those two items, the elevation of the house came up a little bit. If you actually look at the original walkout elevation, that was held. So the drainage off the rear of the property is maintained. Additional course in the basement, as well as the ADA accessibility, it causes the finished grade entry at the garage to be approximately two feet higher. You know, the house is already completely built. The yards are stabilized. We're not proposing to do any work out here. We're just going through the town required approvals based on the deviation here, just to make sure that everything is as the town requires. So in general, the drainage patterns are maintained. Everything kind of flows, like all these lots adjacent to it, off to the east, off the rear of the properties, and then continues down the slope there, shown at the bottom of that image right there. It's about a five-on-one all through town lands. So that's kind of the summary on what occurred and why we're here this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thanks, James. So really, there's no construction planned. The only thing we're looking at here is the fact that the house was built two feet higher than it had originally been proposed.
Correct. We're not proposing to do any disturbance or anything out there. So there's, you know, all the lawn stabilized, all the erosion control measures have been removed from the area, grass is growing, and drainage is generally still conveyed kind of down the center of the house lines, along the property line toward the rear of the lots.
Okay, open it up to the board. Board have any questions?
Yeah, this is Gary Humes. So I was out there today just to take a look at it and see what the elevation changes really were. And I will agree that I think my biggest concern was with water drainage to the corresponding lots, Lot 55 on the... I don't know if that's north or south, whatever direction that is, but Lot 55 and then Lot 57. And there is, between 56 and 55, there's a, I believe, a very noticeable and defined swale that will take the water and run it to the backside and then down the hill. I did not see that between Lot 56 and 57. And that was a kind of a concern to me with the way that the final grading was done. A lot of that water, to me, looks as if it will come right off of Lot 56 and kind of be pushed right into the backyard of Lot 57. So I think that's, at least to me visually, when I looked at it and walked the property, I met the owner out there, and he was kind enough to enable me to walk the property with him. And I did not see a noticeable swale between 56 and 57. So that is a concern of mine, is that I'm not sure there's proper stormwater place for that water to go down toward the back of the property. And it's gonna move more toward Lot 57. So I don't know if there's something you can do to address that.
Over. James, can you respond?
Sure. So between Lot 56 and 57, I believe the homeowner on Lot 57 has constructed a small wrought iron fence. It's shown on the instrument survey that we prepared for Lot 56, one of the other drawings. So that was placed basically right on the property line there. I did have a chance to talk with Gerber Homes about this issue. We were made aware of it. I believe Bruce was able to get out there and also meet with the homeowner. What we think we could do pretty simplistically is, if this is a concern, is to use a little bit of topsoil on Lot 56, so the property we're looking to get approval for, and basically create kind of a small little berm, if you will, or wedge kind of right along the wrought iron fence, to just help prevent the water from traveling through the fence, and then kind of direct it back toward the property line to the east, kind of as it is originally intended. I believe there was some other construction on Lot 57 as well, in terms of a pool and a patio, but we don't think that there's anything substantial that we couldn't take care of with a little bit of topsoil, if drainage is a concern about some of it traversing the property line.
I certainly think that would help, and I think that would be needed. I don't know if anybody, I don't know if any of the board members went out there and took a look at it or anything and want to weigh in on that.
Hey, Gary, it's Bob. I looked at it too, but my concern, my question really was then toward, did that increase in height from the plan change the drainage at all? Was that affected of what was approved prior to? That's what I was trying to figure out, how that this variance per se would change the slope plan at all.
I mean, in general, all these houses are all walkouts. So I mean, there's at least seven and a half to eight and a half feet of elevation change from the front to the rear of the house. And then, like I mentioned, after that, the town-owned lands slope out pretty substantially once you get off the property line. So it'd be kind of hard to do anything in this area that would drastically change the drainage patterns. I mean, the water is gonna continue to flow toward the town-owned lands and then down the hill. There may be some minor deviations. Obviously, the side yard swales are supposed to be cut right down the property lines, so that way they're kind of a shared feature between the homeowners. You know, the construction of the wrought iron fence does prevent us from kind of redefining that swale right on the property line without removing it, grading it, and then reinstalling it. That's kind of why, based on my conversations with Gerber Homes, we thought that this would be best resolved by just doing a little bit of topsoil to help kind of keep the drainage from Lot 56 on 56.
Thank you.
Yes, board, this is Lance with MRB Group. I was just, you know, as part of our review of the application, we compared it to the original approved plans. And as mentioned by the design engineer, James, from BME, the plans were designed in a manner to have sheet flow between the two properties go towards the rear of the property. I believe all of the roof, and James, correct me if I'm wrong, is tied into the storm sewer system. Is that correct?
The front downspouts are tied into the storm sewer system because it's a walkout.
Yep.
Because of the walkout. The rear downspouts are disconnected. But generally, at that point, they're gonna kind of sheet blow directly off the property, unless there's been some other improvements after the original grading, i.e. a pool or patios or something that would have just been reviewed with code enforcement, I believe.
Correct. So as mentioned earlier by one of the board members, I think conveyance, as shown as per the original approved plan, to get the drainage to the rear of the property away from the neighboring property or any structures on the neighboring property would be something that I know that we had commented on. I think we got the property numbers incorrect. We said 55. We meant 57 in our comment letter, but that was a concern of ours as well. And so I think the berming idea is an option that I don't have a problem with, as long as it's stabilized in accordance of everything else, and it's carried the full length of the property, so that any runoff from your property makes it all the way to the rear property line and doesn't transverse onto the neighboring side. I think that, or at least from my standpoint, is what we would be looking for.
Yeah, I agree. Chuck, I don't know if you want to open up yet or not, but I'd like to know. I believe the property owners for 56, the lot in question, are on here. I'd like to know if they would be willing to have such a berm or a change to their side yard there, if they'd be willing to have that done.
Could you hear me if I talk?
Yes.
So, yes, thanks, Gary.
Excuse me, who's speaking, please?
I'm sorry?
Who's speaking, please?
Oh, it's Gary Malis. I live at the property at 3215 Daisy Way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't see, first of all, one, I don't see how that would work. I understand what you're saying, putting a little topsoil near the Roth iron fence, because quite frankly, it's a see-through fence, and it would go through the fence. I don't see how you would keep the soil there, one. Two, it doesn't... I understand why, what you said about the swale, it would be originally shared, but since the fence is there, then it's not necessarily an option. And I would agree with you there, too. It probably is not an option because of that. And certainly would not want to see a fence removed. Yet, you know, one, I don't see how it would work. Two, I guess I could mow it. I don't know how I'd mow it, but maybe there's a way to weed whack it or mow it. Three, I think it'd look maybe kind of a little funny, but I'm just giving my thoughts, and I don't see, lacking a swale, what's another option? I mean, isn't there drain tile that could have been put in, should have been put in, to avoid something like that?
Well, let me chime in here. How long has the lot been established and as it is now? I mean, it's gone, obviously, through quite a few storm events. How does it drain out there? Does it seem to be working? I mean, is there an issue that we have? Are we trying to fix something that doesn't exist?
Yeah, if you're asking me, I think a drain's fine on our property. But you've got, as you said, you have 55 and 57. And the neighbor from 55 came over today, and he said he did not have any problems. And that was Luke and Sarah, and I'm blanking on his last name. But that's what he said, and I think Gary was there when the three of us talked about that. And I chatted with Sarah today, and we really didn't talk about, you know, water. I didn't talk about water issues with Sarah at all. So I don't know. I mean, I... But on our side, we don't have any, but on Lot 56.
As designed, the intent was to have a side yard swale and have it drain toward the back, toward the parkland. If for any reason it may be diverting on to Lot 57 before it reaches the back of the lot, and that's an issue with the people at Lot 57, then maybe something should be done. But if they're not having an issue with it, and it's fine the way it is, again, I'm referring to Lot 57 now, then I think we're making a... You know, we're probably getting involved with something that we really don't have to.
Well, you know, again, from my perspective, I think you're asking that of the owners of Lot 56.
Yes, well, you're 56, right?
I'm sorry, Lot 50, the next lot, 57?
57, yep.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I believe they are online with us, if you wanted to ask them.
Oh, very good. May we go to the owners of Lot 57 on Daisy Lane? Are you there and let us know how things are in your side and backyard?
Hi. So I'm Sarah. Can you hear me?
And you are?
I'm Sarah Vassello, 3217 Daisy Way. My husband Scott is here as well.
Hello, folks.
Hi. So we haven't initially noticed anything major in terms of water other than the side yard does now naturally get wet and a little more swampy than it did before the house was built, because before the house was built, it was essentially a ditch next to our house. So everything just ran off. So today, you know, our concern was a little bit elevated when we thought about long-term, any kind of storms that might come through. And, you know, the house is new relatively. It's been there eight months or so. So we haven't experienced a lot of wet weather, especially this summer. So I guess our concern is long-term. We do notice it more wet, and it stays more wet. We tried to plant some grass, and the seed did wash right off when we put the seed down. So, you know, we don't have any glaring concerns right now, but certainly as we look out for the longevity of the home and the yard. We were concerned when we heard that we should be concerned about potentially a drain problem.
The problem you mentioned, do you think, Sarah, that that's the result of water coming off of Lot 56? Or is it water coming off your own lot that just doesn't?
You know, it was impossible to say. Bruce from Gerber and I chatted about that today a little bit, and it really is impossible to say. I wish we had more time and data to give you more pattern information with weather. There's really no way of knowing that. I think it could be either way. We've had some really hard rain, so, I mean, there's just... I can't really speak to that. Do you feel like...
Yeah, an eight-month period of time, there's really no way to determine what's coming from that slope or what's just come from the sky.
For our own yard.
Because if we did put a diversion berm in on Lot 56, that would keep the water from crossing the property line and kicking it back toward the park. But again, if what's happening on your property is not a result of that water flow, that runoff, it's more water coming off your own property, then it would be superfluous to put something in that's not really needed. So I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, and I'm just trying to bring this to some sort of conclusion.
Hey, Chuck, this is Bob, if I may.
Sure.
I go right back to our... What we're here for is to discuss why it was developed 12 inches higher, constructed 12 inches higher, and I still can't figure out why a 12-inch increase, and we're talking about swales that should have been done on the site plan a long time ago, and how a 12-inch increase can change how sheet flow falls off the house and into other properties. So I just can't put the two together.
I think it was a two-foot increase. It was, oh, now that's why they're here, is because it's over 12 inches. So I believe it went from 438 to 440, or 440 to 442, or something like that.
Right. So how does an increase in height of a building change the sheet flow? That's what I'm trying to figure out from the original site plan that we approved.
It's the elevation of the first floor. As a result, all the grading around it could be different than what it would be if the first floor was two feet lower. So that's essentially, you know... And then, when you raise the building up, you're putting all the ground around it in a different configuration, and that results in a different flow pattern if you're not careful. And I think that's why the regulation is on the books, and that's why we're here tonight. Yeah, again...
The other answer to that question, I think it's a good question, but the other answer is that this is an amended site plan approval application, and the planning board is entitled to look at any of the elements of the site plan. It's not just for this one issue. It's an entire review of the newly submitted site plan. I think you do make a good point, but that's the other answer to that question.
Thanks, Chris.
And, you know, this is not the first one we've had in this development. And, you know, it was stated in the presentation that it was the desire to raise the ceiling in the basement, and therefore, knowing that that would occur, that the elevation, the rafters, the floor joists would be higher. And at that point, I'm surprised the applicant, the builder, did not come to the code enforcement department and say, hey, heads up, or here's a request we'd like to make to raise this building two feet, and have it considered at that time, rather than doing it after the fact. And again, this is at least the second property in that development where we have a higher than two-foot elevation increase over the approved plan. So that's a procedure issue. It doesn't have to do with what's happening on the site itself as far as drainage. Let's try to resolve this drainage thing first, folks. So...
Go ahead.
On those notes, trying to put this all together, while we have our... Nadler here. Chris, can I ask, like, what is the liability into the future for the town? And specifically in response to the neighbors' comments about the longevity and the issues that may arise into the future? Like, can you answer that, please, Chris?
I sure can. The answer is the town doesn't have any liability here. The town has an interest in creating as good of a drainage situation as can be attained and can be reasonably attained. You know, at some point, the town engineer and the planning board signed off on the site plan as is. Whether two feet of increase in elevation is causing drainage issues or not, I don't know. I'm not an engineer, but, you know, the town has an opportunity to maybe make, you know, improve a drainage situation here in this approval or amended approval. The town has no liability to make sure everybody has perfect drainage. The town has an obligation in site plan approval to make sure drainage is adequate.
Yeah, this is Lance. And I think it's important to note that when we look at it, we compare the original approved signed plan that shows conveyance of drainage from the front of the property being tied in and the sides of property being conveyed to the rear of the property. The new proposed or amended plan that's in violation of the approved plan does not show that. And that's what I think, at least from our perspective, that we're trying to correct, whether it be by berm, whether it be by swale, that is what we're trying to correct, is to provide that same conveyance that was originally approved onto this amended plan.
So Lance, I was gonna defer to you anyway. It sounds like you're saying that what you're seeing here would not serve the purpose of us being able to make a decision as to whether the change in grade would have an effect on the adjacent property owners, and that we should have more information?
Well, yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, from the original approved plan, there was a drainage swale that conveyed all water from between the two properties to the rear. And as shown now, it's no longer doing that. It's sheet flowing onto the neighboring property. So whether that's direct relation to the increase in height or whether or not the site was ever graded property to begin with, I can't answer that question. But if we wanted to bring it as close as possible to being compliant with the original approved plan, there would need to be, A, a swale put between the two properties, or B, a berm of some sort, which we would ask to be shown on the plan so that we can verify if it's designed correctly to convey water from Lot 56 to the rear of the property and away from the neighboring property, as per our codes and our site design criteria requires.
Are we saying that the plan in front of us right now does show a side yard swale running to the rear of the property? So as the plan shows, it's a good concept, or it's a good plan?
That is the original approved plan.
Okay, well...
The one on the left is not. That's the amended one. And as you can see, you have conveyance starting at the 844 contour, and then it softens up, and then it starts going on to Lot 57. And then, when you look at the survey map...
Okay, gotcha.
It further defines that as being... You have your 840 contour, and everything from there starts going to Lot 57.
Okay. Okay. So I guess what we're saying is this plan is not amended plan that we can endorse, accept. Is that what we're, we're saying, Board?
I would say I do not support the, the new plan that does not, that is, I would say the new amended plan is not in substantial compliance with your original plan.
James, do you have any comments before we, we take, take a vote on this thing?
My only statement would be that, you know, drainage intent is to just convey water from, you know, the area between the houses toward the rear of the property. I would, I would expect if you went around and looked at all the side yard swales of this entire subdivision, you would see this situation over and over again where a little bit of drainage, you know, goes on to the neighboring property. I still think all the water is conveyed, you know, as the overall drainage intent of the subdivision, you know, off the rear of the property and eventually makes its way into the, you know, appropriate stormwater facility. I would kind of in, you know, question, you know, lot fifty-seven, does the water pool, does it pond when it rains, or is it just wet for a period of time and then, you know, eventually dries out like, you know, on any typical yard or lawn, obviously it's going to be wet with a heavy rain. I'd be more concerned if, you know, there was a low spot or an area where the water was trapped and, and pooled regularly versus, you know, infiltrated into the ground. Because that could be a combination of things as to what could be being wet. Obviously, if the soils were, you know, compacted or more clays versus sand, and, and, you know, that sort of nature. So in general, I think that the, you know, kind of the general intent of the drainage pattern for the subdivision is still not, regardless of, you know, if a little bit more yard is sheet flowed onto the adjacent property. And then I would probably lean to, you know, the coordination with Gerber and then the homeowners for if, if you do want something resolved, whether it's a berm or something to, to better define that drainage swell.
Well, I think that's your next step to, to meet with the homeowner and, and Sarah and Scott out there, and maybe come up with a plan and bring it back to us as far as what would work for everybody concerned. I mean, again, there may be the other properties in the, in the development that are similar in terms of how they drain. They don't, won't comply, but, but this property is under a microscope. It was not built according to the original plan. We are looking to this plan now. We have to make sure that, that what occurred out there is, does not cause any concerns for the buddy neighbors and that the lot will drain correctly. So that being said, I think, I guess we can, I guess we can defer or table this action on this rather than a denial. Let's, let's, I'll consider a motion to table action on this until BME, Gerber, and the two property owners can meet and come back with a plan that is amenable to everyone concerned. Does that sound good?
Yeah, this is Gary. I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
To table action on this amended subdivision.
To what date?
Well, till, till the, till everybody can meet and a, an amended plan can be submitted. I'm certainly willing to consider this at the October thirteenth meeting. If you can get everything done before that, that'd be fine. And because I think that agenda is relatively light, so we can take it up then. Or otherwise, it would go to October twenty-seventh.
James, do you think you could get us revised plans by, I guess it would be October fifth?
I could certainly put together a revised plan by that date. But what you see on the proposed design plan on the left here, that is the actual grading that we surveyed out there. So the proposed contours match exactly the conditions, you know, up to probably five feet outside our property line. Obviously, we didn't trespass on to lot fifty-five or lot fifty-seven to obtain any current survey there. So I do not know for sure that those houses were, you know, built to the final grade either, so.
It's, yeah, we're, we're not asking for that. We need you to meet with those neighbors and come up with a plan that will allow for better kind of drainage. It's not a matter of what everybody else in the neighborhood has. This is what we want to see.
Right, but I guess my point is if you want an actual engineered document, that might be different than just a meeting with the neighbor and coming up with a verbal agreement on a solution.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I would want a written plan.
We, we want an amended plan showing the way that you're going to, if it involves some construction of a berm, if it involves the, the construction of a swell, whatever it takes, you show that on a plan and we'll, we'll act on it.
Okay.
All right. Okay, I have a motion and a second to table action on this, this amended subdivision. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Chuck, what is the date, please, for the amendment?
We're shooting foot, so, oh, yeah, the hearing will be continued to the thirteenth of October.
Okay.
I, I just like to make comment to it. I, I'd like to be involved too in this as well as the homeowner.
Well, you are the homeowner.
Yes.
Okay.
You mentioned the neighbors. I just-
Oh, okay, no, the lot fifty-six and lot fifty-seven, and if the neighbors at lot fifty-five are available, they certainly may join it.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Very good. All right. Moving on to our next public hearing, I will open a hearing for the Venezia Group LLC, owners of property on La Crosse Circle. They are seeking final subdivision approval for the Fox Ridge Phase five B three. The, the illustrious Mr. Venezia, who is in the house?
Yeah, I'm here. This is Rocco.
All right, Rocco.
I know Anthony's here too, so I, I'll get it kicked off. So, so this is the last phase of Fox Ridge. We're calling it five B three. And Aaron has done the engineering. So five B one up on Lake Breeze is completed. You guys signed off on that. That has five lots, and that's the way that it'll always be. We can't do anymore because it's a private drive. And then five B two was constructed about two years ago and now has four houses with another house under construction. Five B three, which we're asking for approval tonight, consists of twelve lots. Cul-de-sac will be at the end of the existing La Crosse, going in about two hundred feet and turning. It's a fairly large cul-de-sac. It's comparable to the one here on, that I live on, on Lower Lane, and a couple others around town are this big. The homes are set way back, kind of for aesthetics and also for attaining walkouts on some of the lots. There's not a lot of grading that needs to be done. There is some grading. The grading that's going to be completed will be more or less to build up the lots on the north side of the cul-de-sac, specifically lots five through nine. They drop off and that, what we want to do is build up the front so that we can build walkout houses and take all the rainwater and bring it out to the stormwater system on La Crosse Circle on the cul-de-sac. We're extending the sewer water approximately two hundred and forty feet from where it ends now. Plans have, you know, all been submitted to all the agencies. We are crossing the city water easement, which we have before. It's really deep, and we did get a comment back from the city I saw where they had no, no concerns about what we were proposing. We still own and maintain the, you know, the four bay, the sediment pond. Once this project is done, completed, the last house is built and everything's back to lawns, we'll attempt to convey that to the HOA. But as of this point, that's still owned and controlled by, by the Venezia, by Venezia Group. That's that lot right there with the, as you can see in the tag, it's Venezia Group. That, that was a question on Lance's letter. So we still have our, we still have our SWIP in effect. Lance has asked for Aaron to update that. She's in the process of doing that. We did get Lance's letter. We went through it point by point. There was nothing in there that we couldn't do. Most of it was minor in nature. Isn't that correct, Lance? It was really not a showstopper.
No, I, I, I appreciate it, Rocco. I did, I did talk to Anthony today as well. And I'm not trying to speak for Anthony. I'm just referencing that I did have a conversation with him. I agree-
He did mention, he mentioned that.
I don't, I didn't think I had anything in there that was a showstopper, but obviously I'm on one side of the table and you're on the other, so I, I don't, I don't know if you thought the same way, but that was my opinion.
I, I felt like it was all genuine comments and needed to be addressed. And it was, like I said, I thought they were minor in nature.
If I may, I guess one, one minor point, Rocco, that I, as we're talking about drainage, both on the previous project and this one, something to consider, because I've seen it, we've seen it in a lot, on a lot of projects, not just by you, by, by everybody, where we have these drainage swales in the rear of the properties, and then ultimately these home buyers come in and then they, they want to change the project. They want to amend their house, make it a little bit bigger, or add a patio or a pool. And now our drainage swales, which in some instances are hugging the, closer to the, to the residents, are now being either filled in due to the pool or the extension of a shed or something else. And so I guess one of the questions that I, I want to consider is, is there a way for us to, it does expand your grading. It does require additional grading. But if we could pull those swales further back to the rear of the property to give us maximum amount of yard space for these properties so that if they want a shed, if they put a pool, if they put patio in or anything else on their house, it doesn't impact that drainage swell that's conveying runoff away from them.
We certainly can do that. We certainly can do that.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Was, was that in your letter, Lance? That item?
In a roundabout way, yes. I, I think I was asking for if the drainage swales could be, can pulled further to the rear of the property to, to allow extensions of houses or improvements to be made without impacting the drainage swell.
Yeah, I just don't want to lose track of it. If we have to make it a condition, fine. If it's in your letter, then we don't have to.
Yeah, it's in my-
Just so, just so everybody's aware, what we're probably going to do is, you know, try to take those swales, looking at it a second time, and taking and bringing them north to the south. Recently, we constructed a swell on the back end of, and we got to add that to this drawing to absorb the water that was some of the homes that were built. So I think that's a better move to get that water coming that way, because then it goes into ponds. And then on top of that, if you do the calculations, Lance, the area that, that gets to the east side of those lots is the top of the mountain, the top of the hill. So the drainage area that comes towards those houses is very, very miniscule. There's, there's not a lot of drainage there.
Sure.
So, so if you do the calculations, I think the way Aaron's drawing it, it's a little, it looks a little excessive, but she's just trying to get it out of her, you know?
That's fine. I just, I guess, I don't necessarily have a problem with the drainage swales as much as, I just want to make sure that, you know, they, they stay intact, right?
The problem is if I go, if I go too much further up the hill with the drainage swales-
I get it. I get it.
I'd be building them on top of the hill.
I, I understand that some of the properties, probably you can't do it. I, I can understand that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Eric, one general question related to grading. Do you see the applicant having to come back for a site plan approval for each one of these lots like we did over in the other street?
Why would we want to do that?
That's my question. I know we did it over on, on Lake Breeze.
That was a little bit different of a situation, Chuck, with the way that it was laid out. This is more of a larger subdivision, typical what you would see of a, a bigger subdivision where we just get the building permits to put them in, and they're put into this plan.
So as long as the detail is shown on this plan, and I'm not looking for more work from the planning board, but, because to go through twelve site plan approvals would-
As long as, as long as everything is built and designed and built to this, this plan, it should be good to go. We shouldn't see any problems.
And you don't raise the floor elevation.
No.
Yeah, that's important.
All righty. I'll open it up to the board. Any questions? We've certainly seen Fox Ridge enough times, and we're going to hate to see it come to an end, but-
Yeah, you're gonna miss it, but I got a couple other cooking it. I'll drive you crazy with.
Okay, well, one at a time, one at a time, Rocco. Okay, board members, any questions, concerns, comments?
This, this is Gary. I guess I'll, I'll start. I, I wasn't, I haven't been involved in the whole Fox Ridge stuff, everything, because this has been going on for a long, long time.
It's before you were born.
Oh, yeah, but the, but, but in other past meetings, I know we've had some, some interest from people that are, that actually reside on Middle Cheshire. And I remember us talking about, and Rocco, I think I remember you kind of promising that, I believe, I was what I heard, that you were going to provide sewer capability to some of those property.
So-
How, how is that done? Was that going to be done through here? Because I, I read, there's communications back and forth from the, the county sewer district. And in one of those, it says the district will not require providing sanitary sewer service to the adjoining parcels on Middle Cheshire Road. And I, I, I'm not trying to imply something here, but I'm just wondering, was that an out? That we're, that now all of a sudden, we're not going to be able to do that? Or is it being provided via another, another route, or what's-
A couple of things, a couple of things, Gary. First of all, that promise was never made by me. I always carried it over because it was a, but what that was, I called it zoning for dollars. Ron Brandt, when he was the director of development, made a deal with the developer, my predecessor, to give him two extra lots in the subdivision in return for constructing that sewer line. The cost of that sewer line is forty or fifty thousand dollars, and the two lots certainly would have compensated him for the cost of constructing that. So that would have brought the total to one fifty-seven. When I looked at it with my attorneys, they said that's really illegal because the original seaker was for one fifty-five, and we really couldn't go outside that seaker. So we were stuck with the one fifty-five. And now, in fact, we're one fifty-two. So we're five lots below what we were. So having said that, you know, we kind of looked at it, and then we went back to the county, and the county decided they didn't want the off-site sewer, like out of district users. If they don't have a sewer line along a road, Gary, they'd have to build a road. And there's, there's just no way I want to build a road between two of my homeowners on a cul-de-sac to service a sewer line. That would be really, really put a burden on us. So having said that, we've removed it, and we don't see why we would have to do it if the county's against it. And, you know, there's no direct benefit from us to do it. You know, eventually a sewer will come down Middle Cheshire and they can connect to that. And that's the way the county sees it.
Well, Gary, I, I certainly concur with your evaluation because I went through the same scratching in my head as to what happened out here. Because we, you and I, and, you know, I've sat in meetings where residents from Middle Cheshire have been there, and they've asked, what about the sewer? What about the sewer? And I think we, we said that when this section was finally approved, that the sewer, at least an easement, and I'm not saying the line be constructed. I think that's all that was promised the last we went through this, this whole thing, which was back in two thousand fourteen, then it was re, re, rethought of and- which was back in, uh, two thousand fourteen, then it was re, re, uh, rethought of in two thousand and nineteen. But in the meantime, uh, I guess Hank Rocco had asked the county to release the easement, cause the easement was on the preliminary plan. It was part of the preliminary plan.
No, it was the county, it was the county that triggered that. The county got back to Austin, I think Hank was still alive.
No, you read.
And the county says.
You read the release, Frank Rocco, and it says that the releaser, which was, uh, properties of Western New York, uh, which was Hank, had requested that the easement be vacated. And in return, the county vacated it. So it was a, it was a unilateral withdrawal or removal of the, of the easement without the town's knowledge. I would assume, I didn't know about it. I don't know if any of your town officials know about it, but I guess, uh, that's one of the reasons why I wanted Chris to be part of this discussion.
Was that, this, was that released when all the other easements that we had were released with the water lines, the sewer lines for, there was an original plan that, um, property development of Western New York had and Scott Harder did, where the two roads connected. And they made us file the easements before we constructed it. And I think as part of that, the release of the major easements, that was included in it.
Yeah, that is correct, yep.
And storm easements.
The release occurred August twenty sixth, uh, two thousand fourteen.
Probably been at the same time that we got the waters, water and storm sewer releases too, for those, that, that particular design.
Well, again, my question is, it was requested by Hank and it was accepted by the county, but the town wasn't in the loop at all, even though our preliminary subdivision plan showed that easement, uh, to be on record as far as the preliminary approval. So here we are at final approval and the easement has gone away. So I guess that's, that's the deliberations we're in. And, uh, again, Chris, call on you.
So my question would be, does the final overall subdivision plan show, have as a condition of approval, this easement?
The original plan, Chris?
Correct.
From the eighties?
Whatever the fi, the, the current final overall site plan.
That was done in the eighties. That was done in the eighties. That showed a hundred and fifty five lots and no, there was not, no, there was not an easement there.
Rocco, hold on. Chris, are you talking about the, you're talking about like the prelim overall plan for showing, you know, all the phases if I, uh, yes, I believe that one did still have on the easement for it. And I think the conditions still call it out in its most recent form as having that easement. It just, you know, it's been carried over for a number of years.
No, okay.
So the final plan though, that's before the board tonight, does not have that easement.
Okay. Before that could be approved, I would recommend that the town, that the planning board verify that the county doesn't want it beyond Hank requesting it. Who knows what the county was thinking? We just get a letter from the county sewer department saying, yeah, we're not interested.
Don't we already have that?
Chris, 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 we have that.
Hold on.
What do you have? We, we have a letter.
Yeah, we have an email from Jack back in September.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's actually the one, Chris, that I was referring to when, when I went through the documentation. Is there something that would?
Okay. And it says, we don't want an easement between Middle Cheshire?
Yeah, it says, in response to your inquiry, the district will not require providing sanitary sewer service to adjoining parcels along Middle Cheshire Road. There it is, right there.
Okay, okay. Then I'd recommend that the planning board make note of that, that it's essentially releasing that condition of the original overall approval and subsequent approvals based on, you know, factual evidence submitted by the applicant and by the county.
Okay, well then, what I'd like to do now is, is there anyone out in the audience, uh, who lives on Middle Cheshire Road who would like to speak on this issue?
Uh, Jack Kellogg raised his hand.
Jack, are you there?
I'm here. Can I be heard?
Sure.
Um, I'm Jack Kellogg. I live at forty-eight, fifty-one Ashton Place. Um, lot, eight, nine seem to run bill there across the property that presently owned by DeRis or Warner Brothers. And the problem is, if we develop this, seven, eight, nine are going to start feeding the Ashton Creek, as I call it, that's immediately to my west. Uh, and if anything's done, property development, as far as alleged continuation of Ashton, is going to make a further drainage problem. Um, I would think that, um, if the retention pond was put in there on this development, more around seven, eight, nine, a low spot, so that, uh, retention pond can be put in later on, if it is developed farther down the hill, uh, that it would be able to control it. Um, to, for this board to get an idea of the slope of the land, uh, all they have to do is take a look at the Ferris Hills that has roughly the same slope and has two retention ponds. And I think if, uh, the eastern edge of seven, lot, seven, eight, nine, were really taken into consideration, somewhere between this development and the Ashton Creek, you're going to have to require two retention ponds.
All right, thanks, Jack. I, I think, uh, everything within the perimeter of this, uh, plan, uh, for the most part is controlled on the Fox Ridge property, right?
That's correct. I'm, I'm a little confused. I mean, Jack is talking about Ashton Place and none of this water goes in.
Yeah, okay, that, that was my question. None of this water goes in that direction. Okay. Uh, again, uh, we were talking about the sanitary sewer and that, Jack, I appreciate your comments and that's something that certainly will be considered if and when development ever occurs as we get over the ridge here. But, um, so there's no one on the, on the line or in the meeting that, uh, is from Middle Cheshire Road?
Uh, I don't see any. Jack did raise his hand.
Okay. Okay, well then, uh, I, I know that they were notified of this meeting, uh, through the public notice. So, um, I guess there isn't as big a concern about the sanitary sewer issue as there was previously. And, um, I guess that being said, um, how's the board feel about, uh, removing or, uh, allowing for the removal of the, uh, the easement, the sanitary sewer easement from the, the back of the properties on Middle Cheshire? Well, not to remove, because it's not shown, but not require an easement along that. That, is that in agreement with the board?
No, I, I can, I, I guess I can agree with that if that, that's the, the, the fire buddy. I just kind of in my gut, I just feel it's just kind of like a switch. I don't mean that, Rocco, in any derogatory manner. I mean, I know you're.
You're right, you're right, Gary. I, I mean, we, we heard it. We heard.
I heard you kind of say, hey, we're getting a sewer. We're, don't worry, we're going to get it. And now it seems like it's gone and it's upsetting. That, that's all I'll say.
You, you never heard that from me though, is what I'm going to say.
Oh, I, I thought I, I believe I did, but it's, all right.
Well, whatever, whatever, we can agree to disagree.
We don't have to, we don't have to do that. Right.
I mean, one other option I thought of that's been used, uh, in, you know, in the past plans I worked on would be to create a, a reservation, an easement reservation up there. Um, and it's not really an easement, it's nothing recorded, but it's just shown as a reservation on the plan that if and when, uh, the property owners in the county want to go through the expense of putting in a sewer line that the, uh, uh, the area has at least been reserved for a sanitary sewer in the future. Is that a possibility, Chris?
It's a possibility, but it doesn't, it doesn't, cause the, the property owners at that time won't be Rocco. There'll be the homeowners, the two homeowners, who, who will then have to agree or have full right to disagree to allow an easement.
So.
That being said, the county can always, you know, forcibly take an easement. It's expensive procedure, but the county really wants a sewer easement there. They can, can, you know, execute condemnation proceedings and, you know, compensate the homeowners for the, for the land. Does not foreclose the possibility of ever having an easement there.
Rocco, you were going to say something?
So, so we have a similar situation in, on Bedford. At the end of Bedford, when they did the subdivision, they left a sewer easement, a reservation for a sewer easement to go across two lots at the end. There was a reservation, it's shown on a file map, it's filed in the county, but they never backed it up with an easement, a recorded easement to the county. And if you, if you were to pull that map, you would see that reservation, but there's no legal instrument and according to the county, the only way they could get access to that easement, it's right on that between forty-eight, seventy-four and forty-eight, seventy-five. That sewer would go up to the Van Nistgen property. And just recently we explored that and the county said it's a dead end. So it's kind of the same thing where they were trying to, you know, force a sewer easement up to a, an existing, you know, an adjacent piece of property to, to, to carry the sewer onward, you know? Um, so they, they did it, but now the two landowners refused to do it and the county don't have the, you know, the county don't have the stomach to go after it. So, so I, see it there? Right there?
Yep.
Actually, it's on the southern line. It's on, it's, it's not the northern one, cause that stops. Uh, but it's that, you see a thirty-five foot utility easement to Town of Canday, one Canday Lake County Sewer? But they never did it. They never, they never deeded it. So it's a legal question if it really exists, if it's shown on the survey map, but on the file map, but, and I'm sure it was a condition of approval. But, but it's never been backed up with an easement. So it's kind of the same scenario. If you're going to do an easement, you might as well do the easement, but the county don't have this, the county don't really want an easement across there. They don't want a road back there and I truly don't want to, you know, build a four hundred thousand dollar home and have a road right alongside of it to get to a sewer line that, and it's going to look terrible. It's a real burden for us.
I guess the other question is, if there was a sewer, where would it go? Would have to come out, what, between two of the properties, out to the, out to the cul-de-sac or out to the road? Or was it going the other direction?
No, it was going to go between houses and to the cul-de-sac and tied into our main at the cul-de-sac.
So you'd need an easement.
And then, and then another thing. And then another fact, because of gravity, we can't even get a, we can only get three of them. We can't even get, we can't even get the majority of the houses. We can only get a few of them.
Okay. All right, well, let's, uh, let's at least wrap the discussion up on the sanitary sewer. So, uh, it does not show an easement, uh, the easement was vacated. I guess that will, that shows on the final plan as not being there, which is correct. So, uh, let's talk about any other items, uh, the board may have. Uh, I know Jim Fletch, excuse me, go ahead.
This is Ryan Stachak. Can we, sidewalk easements. Rocco.
Yeah, that, Ryan, that's a comment on, on, on Lance's and we absolutely are going to put that there. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Did you forget that Ryan was going to ask and just forget to put him on the plan originally?
We knew, we just wanted to see if he was paying attention.
That's what I thought.
Uh, related, how about, how about streetlights, Rocco?
There was another one I kind of tried to sneak by yous, but you got me.
Okay, streetlights, sidewalk easement.
Yep.
Somebody keeping track of these.
They're, just for the record.
They're on Lance's letter.
Just for the record, both of those comments are in my comment letter.
Yeah.
As well as removing the street trees from the right of way and pulling the street trees outside of the right way.
Yep, yep, we got that.
Uh, does the SWIP have to be updated or is it just good as is?
Yeah, so what they would do is they would just amend the SWIP to make sure that it documents the improvements that they're showing as five B three. They, they've done it with five B one and with five B two. It's ba, it's basically verbatim to that. It's just amended so that we have an updated SWIP for this section that they're under, they're working under the existing NOI for the overall Fox Ridge. The stormwater facility's already been sized, the handle, the flow from this site and actually with more lots than what they're proposing now. Um, all the fronts of the lots are going to be tied into the closed storm sewer system, which would be conveyed to the stormwater facility. We are requesting both in our comment letter and as a condition for your consideration, as with previous approvals, uh, Fox Ridge, that the facility, um, be, be documented, uh, the stormwater management facility, depth and capacity be documented and forwarded to the town, uh, prior to the issuance of permits. And then ultimately forward. I'm sorry.
Uh, Lance, we just did that for five B one, so there's a, there's a updated file showing all those elevations on file from June.
Okay.
Eric, Eric has that.
Okay.
Lance, uh, shouldn't that maybe be done at the end of the project?
So yes, yes and no. So I wasn't sure if it was done with the previous project or not, so I put it on here, but I just made a note that if we could do it at the end, because ultimately at the end, prior to closing out, as with any project in the town, we get record drawings and the town's going to want to know that that facility has the depth to handle the site going forward. So if we make that note, instead of saying prior to the issuance of building permits, prior to the issuance of the final C of O and closing out of the project.
Okay. Very good, very good. Uh, again, uh, Bob, you have any questions? Karen?
No.
Brian, Brian, got any sidewalks? Ryan, anything else? Yeah, I'm just trying to, trying to dot the i's and cross the t's here, since this is sort of the closeout of Fox Ridge.
Do we really think the closeout of Fox Ridge? Do we really, do we really think?
Yes, Ryan, we really think it this time.
Come on, Anthony, let's get these things in the ground. Um, I, you know, I, I like the layout. I think it fits for that community. Um, you know, on the other side, it, it kind of conserves the property on the west side of that hill where that big parcel is that we saw a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
This to be, you know, the, 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 the stormwater pond is right there. We're utilizing that. It's an existing stormwater structure. This seems like it's ready to roll and hit the road. I don't see why people, uh, you know, the, the, the sewer issue is a little disappointing. I don't understand how the county can have, I, I, I would say, I don't think that the county's decision to remove the easement is reflecting my opinion about it. I, I feel like I know the story and I, I think I sit with Gary and Chuck on this one. I, I, I don't think it's a deal breaker for this and I support this and I, and I'm ready to move forward.
Well, let me make clear, you're not obligated, the county's opinion is not binding on the planning board. If the planning board wants a sewer easement there, the planning board has full authority to require a sewer easement regardless of what the county does.
My, my question is that I'm left with not quite knowing if there's closure with your HOA there.
What do you mean closure with the HOA?
Well, if I remember the hearings that we had, um, I remember the, um, that the Fox Ridge folks had a lot of, um, concerns about drainage. But did that all get, uh, signed off and, cause I, I just missed the interim step then.
If, if they have concerns about drainage, where are they right now? I, I don't know.
Okay. So it got, in other words, you did, uh, resolve it with them.
Uh, we must have, because they're not here, so I, I don't, I don't see any of them in the meeting unless, unless they're not saying.
Uh, this is Brian Mater. Um, I'm the president of the HOA. So we're here.
Good.
Okay, I was just getting ready to go back out to the public. Hang on, Brian, and see if you have any, if you have any comments, just hold on a second.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, well, there was just a comment that nobody was from, um, was from the HOA, so I thought I'd throw that in.
Thank you.
Does he, does he have a comment or is he just saying that he is here and he doesn't have a comment?
I do have a comment, but I'll wait until you ask. I do have a comment, but I'll wait until you ask for it.
Okay, stand by, stand by. Uh, Jim Fletcher had quite a couple of issues to go over. You saw that, uh.
I saw that, yeah.
Anthony, okay, I'll relay mostly water.
None of those are a problem.
Uh, the, the cul-de-sac, uh, although it's, it's very large, which is good, and it has a, an island in the middle, which is good. Uh, with all those lots running on that cul-de-sac, uh, if, if two people had a party the same night, I don't know where the on-street parking would be. But, uh, the, the good news is, it didn't, well, they can't park. Yeah, they might if they, if they.
Well, that's what they do on Lower, on Lower Lane. We have block parties and there's like 30 cars in there.
Up on, up on the grass?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They do.
Well, that, that's not the intent. I, I see it more for Jim's benefit in terms of a place to put the snow when he plows that, uh, that big, big bubble. Uh, but again.
By the way, you'll be able, they'll be able to, I mean, with the size of that cul-de-sac, they'll be able to have some, quite a bit of on-street parking and room to get around.
Well, and the driveways are long enough too, that you can park, uh, on the driveways and, uh, guess first man in, last man out in the driveway. Okay, um.
Yep.
This is Gary, a little about, uh, excuse me, another question about that, uh, the cul-de-sac there and I'm, Jim Fletcher's no removal point of view. It, from what I see on the drawings and I'm just questioning here, it looks like there's gonna be a, is there a proposed, uh, gutter both on the interior as well as the exterior diameter of that cul-de-sac?
I, I, Eric, I need to see the plan. I'm not looking at the plan.
I think there is. I think it's amenable.
Looks to me like there is.
It's amenable curb gutter.
Yeah, and, and so I guess I was just a little, is that, I don't know, I guess I have to, I'm not an expert on this, but with snowplow equipment, if, if that's where Jim would put a lot of the snow, is push it into the interior of that thing, would that, would that damage that?
No. To be honest with you, when he plows our street, he, he, he goes right around the circle and pushes it to the outside because that's how the plow is set up.
Just like they're plowing a road. They just, you know, it goes to the outside.
Yeah, to, to answer your question, it, it won't be any different than regular street plowing with the gutter in the inside. His wing will hit it or it won't hit it, you know? So I'll, I'll go to drive with you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that was the only, only other little thing I saw that I wanted to ask about.
Uh, Eric, you sent this to the county planning board, but they did not respond. Is that correct? Okay, let the records, let the records show, uh, that, uh, ECB, did they not meet in time to review this?
I comment. Or they reviewed it, but.
Yeah, I didn't have the minutes of their meeting in the third. Some water retention filtration measures, okay, very well. Cheshire Fire did not respond. We did get a, a no comment from the city of Canadega. Other than that, with MRB. All right, uh, Brian, if you're still out there, we'll, uh, hear what you have to say. You have any comments on this application?
Um, just a few questions. Um, one is the island circle, whatever you call it itself, how will that be finished? Will that be graded and seeded or what's, what's the plan?
Yeah, graded, graded, yeah.
But not seeded?
Grass, graded and seeded. It says on there, proposed grass on it.
Yes.
It, it's on the plan.
And your next question.
Okay, I, I see that now. Okay, okay.
And your next question, Brian, is who's gonna maintain it, right?
Well, no, the HOA will. The, the HOA will maintain that once we, uh, you know, we, we get title to that land, but, um.
That'll be in the right of way.
That'll be the town's land, but it'll, it'll be, it won't be titled to the town, to the, to the HOA.
I think you get a break on that one.
Typically, it's exactly like the other cul-de-sacs. The center of the cul-de-sac is not, but it's, you know, not all of them.
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again. There was a couple of people talking and I didn't catch it.
Are they doing, I guess.
So, so Brian, I'm assuming from what you're telling us that right now, the HOA cuts the grass in the center island.
Well, that's what we do in the whole HOA, yeah.
So, yeah, the, the center will be dedicated to the HOA, yeah.
But I think, I think, I think it's just kind of an agreement between you and the town, the highway department, that you take care of it because they actually, it's been dedicated to them. It's part of their roads infrastructure.
Is it? Okay, I guess I wasn't aware of that. Um, we do have, we, we do have landscaping and all of them.
All right, I, I stand corrected, Brian.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be the same type of cul-de-sac system that will, whatever the other phases have had, it'll be dedicated to the HOA at the end. Once it's grassed and everything and the town takes over dedication, in that same process, it'll be dedicated to the HOA, transferred to them as part of the project.
It'll, it'll be transferred to HOA, yeah. Okay, I didn't know they did that.
Yeah, um, thank you. Now, um, all of our, uh, I'll call them circles or common areas are landscaped and, um, you know, what I'm asking is that the, I'll say developer, I don't know if it's Rocco or Gerber, whoever, um, that we have an, we have an allocation, uh, so that we can landscape that? For allocation of funds? I, I don't know, from, from somebody. I mean, I just don't want, I mean, to, to be consistent with the rest of the HOA, um, we need to do some landscaping on that.
So, Brian, the one thing I will bring up is over the past 10 years that developers have owned this, they've been paying into the HOA pocket without ever having any benefit. There's been 28 lots that have always had an HOA fee that has been divvied to the HOA. So over the last, I think it's been about $150 a lot for undeveloped lot as, as the town, as the HOA calls it. And that's, you know, a lot around, it's been about $2,000 to $3,000 a year for the last 10 years that the, the, the developer that has owned this 5B area has been paying to the HOA, but there hasn't really been much use.
I'm, I'm sorry, who's speaking? Who's, who is speaking now?
This is, this is Anthony Venazzi. I'm the developer.
Uh, you're, okay. I, I don't know that that's, that really is the same question or the same subject is needing an allocation of funds to landscape what's gonna become common areas.
So, so I think what he's driving a point home is that, you know, besides $40,000 that was given to the HOA from Hank Guyver, we've put in another $20,000 since we owned it. And actually legally, we only own one parcel and we're being billed for 28. And just to be good neighbors.
We've been down that road, we've been down that road 100 times. We don't need to revisit that one now.
Right, so we, we would. Venazzi Group will not be allowing an allocation for any kind of landscaping at this point.
Correct. We're gonna grass the island and be done with it. We're gonna put grass on the island and be done with it.
I'm, again, I don't.
Well, hang on, hang on.
I, I, I'm not seeing people that don't know who's talking.
Excuse me, quiet everybody. Now, none of the people talking have the authority to make the decision. It's a planning board decision. If the planning board wants to insist that it be landscaped prior to dedication, that's something the planning board can do. The planning board doesn't have the authority to require a financial contribution so that the HOA can, uh, can landscape it itself.
Okay. I'm sorry, if I may, this is Lance with MRB Group. Before we even get down the road of landscaping on the utility plan, you're gonna see that that island is full of easements in utilities. And I can assure you that neither the county sewer district or Jim are going to allow any kind of trees or plantings inside of their easement area. So I don't, I don't believe this island is going to be able to be landscaped.
Is that, is that different from the other islands? Because I think there's, in some of the other islands, there are some easements as well, but I certainly don't know the details of that.
I, I can't speak to previous sections or whether or not that landscaping was authorized by the town or not. I can just tell you that the town does not require, or excuse me, does not allow landscaping or plantings inside their easement. And then the county is likewise not going to allow that.
Okay. Okay, okay, to finalize this issue, I, I think on behalf of the board, I think, uh, if, if it's okay with the board, I will state that the island will be, will be grassed and seeded and stabilized and that will be it. It will be the, uh, I guess, part of the ownership or the HOA, uh, similar to the other islands in terms of their ownership and, uh, we'll leave it at that. You agree, uh, board members?
Well.
Oh. I agree with that.
Okay, all right.
I'm with that.
Okay, Brian, you have anything else you'd like to bring up?
I do. Once the whole thing is done and the, uh, now this is a retention pond now. You know, I understand that like the other, uh, retention ponds, the land is owned by the, uh, HOA, although the town maintains the ponds. But it gets back to, um, I'll use the word landscaping again. Of course, I'm talking about the one there on, on West Ridge. Is when that's turned over, that, uh, at a minimum, you know, should be graded and seeded, just like this island.
Doesn't that, uh, doesn't that basin exist and isn't it being used already for the?
Yeah, it's a pond. It's gotta stay a pond, Chuck. It can't be graded.
It, it's gotta stay a pond. It's gotta stay like it is.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about, uh, at West, right at the, the, the edge, call it the curb of West Ridge, that land which Rocco still owns is not being maintained. It's just weeds and grass and stuff. Okay, we can't have that there forever. We need to make that look kind of consistent with how the whole, you know, the development looks, not just a bunch of weeds.
We can mow that down and get it back to being more manicured area in the front there, along the frontage.
But the pond itself has to stay and it's kind of ugly, to be honest with you. But it's, it's gotta be.
The pond has to, I'm not talking about the pond. I'm talking about 10, 15 feet or whatever between the road towards the pond is to have that look halfway decent as opposed to a bunch of weeds like it is right now.
I think somebody mowed, somebody mowed it.
I have no idea who. We, the HOA does not, because we don't own the property.
We don't know who mowed it. I think the town mowed it.
Whenever you're ready. Saying the application that started at 7:30. I mean.
Okay, wait a minute, we got too many people talking. Uh, all right, so that's an existing lot that's part of this sub, it's not part of the subdivision, but it's an accessory to the subdivision in terms of that's where the stormwater will go.
Yes.
That, that, I, I don't see where there's anything that the planning board should require above and beyond what exists there currently. Uh, we just want to make sure that it has the capacity to handle the stormwater runoff from the improved development, uh, up the hill in 5B. So I think that's, that's the only obligation we have. Uh, and that was part of our engineer's, uh, comment letter. And if you're willing to, if it's already been mowed, Rocco, that's between you and the HOA. I don't think, uh, you know, the town's getting involved with this in any way.
Chuck, I'll just, I'll just put this out there. I'll, I'll keep it maintained and mowed until it's dedicated, that area that he's talking about. We'll make sure that it's, it's kept a little bit nicer than it has been in the past. I can do that.
Thank you, Anthony. It'll help, it'll help you market the property across the street. All right, uh, anybody, uh, else out there in virtual land who would like to speak on this application before I close the hearing? Okay, uh, with no one speaking up, uh, we will move on. Is the board ready to, uh, to move? Uh, we dealing with a seeker or we're not, I guess? Seeker's done, right?
Correct. Seeker was done as part of the original approval of Fox Ridge and therefore we don't have to mess with it.
Okay, let's, uh, take a look at the resolution regarding the subdivision. Okay, the hearing is closed, John, so we're moving on to the deliberations, uh, on the action.
Okay.
Did we pick up a couple of those?
amended prelim. Is that right, Lance?
I'm sorry, say that again, Eric?
We don't have a resolution for an amended prelim approval.
I, let me ask this question. Do we, do we need one? I thought that, I thought the last amended preliminary overall approval had three phases in matching this alignment.
It did, but I think it also had that condition about the sewer.
I'm okay if you add it as a condition, like an explanation in the condition section that the planning board has received information from the county that they don't want this sewer easement, uh, and is thus, you know, okay with not having it. That'll speed things along, I think.
Okay, some kind of an acknowledgement statement.
Exactly, in case somebody, you know, two years from now says, when Rocco's going for his last building, Burmitch, says, wait a minute, you were supposed to put this easement in there. The planning board's considered it, received new information and now is, uh, you know, is okay with seeing it removed.
And, and I would recommend that also be in the findings.
Yep.
Yeah, agree.
Okay, uh, with someone, let's, uh, take a look real quick at the conditions before we act on it.
Sure. If I may, Mr. Chairman, just identify for you that condition number 11, that states regarding the existing depth and capacity, we spoke on it earlier, I would recommend that be amended, that the depth and capacity be verified at the end of the project. So it would be provided prior to the issuance of the final C of O, including all of the project.
Or, uh, well, that, I'm saying dedication of the streets, but that could occur before the final C of O. Okay.
That would be my suggestion, but that's up to the board.
Uh, that's fine. That sounds good to me.
And then we can remove number 13 because that has already occurred. That's the transferring over to Venenzi Group LLC.
Okay, that's the one that needs to be mowed. Okay.
Correct. And then we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep the following two, the last two. That's regarding, um, a stormwater maintenance agreement and then ultimately transferring over, um, the stormwater facility property to the HOA at the final C of O. And then I'm offering, based on dialogue with Fletcher, uh, the Venenzias today and also Eric, uh, as you recall, Fox Ridge 5B2, the section that leads up to this section, um, the roadway and infrastructure has not yet been dedicated. And so what we're, what we're suggesting for your consideration is that the dedication of the roadway and infrastructure for a lot, for section 5B2 be completed and accepted by the town board prior to issuance of permits for 5B3. Um, at this point, it's my understanding, based on an email received from Jim Fletcher today, that the roadway has been repaired in accordance of his requirements and it meets his requirements. Um, and so that he's willing to allow the town to move forward with acceptance of dedication of that, which is what took so long. That's, that's what prevented the town from taking acceptance of it earlier, was the repair of the road. So as of today, I've got an email from Jim stating that he's willing to move forward with acceptance of a road. And so if we had that condition on here, the dedication, dedication includes a number of things to be provided. It requires record drawings. It requires a maintenance bond. It requires the easement paperwork and the deed paperwork and the legal paperwork to be provided to the town. And so I'm saying if that could be done and be required prior to the issuance of permits for 5B3, uh, I think that would be appropriate.
Lance, are you talking about building permits or like general site development permits to start putting the road in?
Um, I guess I'll leave that up to the town to decide on. Uh, I, I obviously want dedication to, to occur sooner than later. I, I think it's important. I think there's liability issues there. Um, so I guess my initial thought is prior to the issuance of any permits, but if there's reasons why that can't be done and the board wants to allow that, that's up to them.
So Eric, or not Eric, but Lance, my only concern is this. Sometimes that paperwork gotta go back to two or three different attorneys, back to the town board. And because we're kind of late in the year here, we're gonna want to get started with at least moving, you know, the soil, so. the soil. So what we would like to do is, if we could do it for the building permits, it would really be helpful. If I could just appeal to the board for that.
Okay. I don't, I don't, I guess I don't have a problem with it. I just, I do feel it's important that we, we process this as soon as we can. And, and to be fair to Rocco and Anthony and those guys, I know that Jim had asked for that road to be repaired and they got, they got right on it and took care of it and addressed that. So I commend, I, I commend them for that. So thank you.
It was unfortunate that it happened. We just had a bad contractor, didn't put enough down and it was embarrassing for us, but you know, we, it worked out. We got it done.
Okay, how about we make it conditional upon building permits?
That would be wonderful. That'd be wonderful.
Okay, all right.
I have one other question. I have one other question.
Well, uh, what, okay, we haven't, we don't have, we don't have a motion yet. You, you can ask a question, Rocco. Go ahead.
I have one other question. So, so I'm, I've, I've looked at the other cul-de-sacs in, in Fox Ridge, and they all have one light on them. Is that gonna be sufficient that we add one light on the cul-de-sac? We have one about, we're putting in one right now, about 150 feet south of the end right now. And then if we put one more, that'll give us one and that'll be, that'll be comparable to the other sections of the subdivision.
Okay, what, why don't you show it on your revised plan and, cause that'll be submitted to Lance and Chris and Jim to look at, and if they're okay with it, we're okay with it.
Fair enough.
All right, so I think we have a resolution before us. Does someone wanna make a motion?
Hey Chuck, this is Bob. I'll make the motion if I see the, let me take.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric. I'll make a motion to accept, uh, Venenzi Group LLC, Fox Ridge Division Phase 5, probably at La Crosse Circle CPN 20-058. With Lance, I believe we're deleting number 11. Uh, and we're gonna have a total of 14. Is that correct, Lance?
So we're deleting number 13.
Let's see, 13.
Yep, and then we.
But amending 11.
An amending 11, and then we added two. One is the dedication. That would be 15. And then 16 is the statement that Chris, now the town planning board and town attorney, um, suggested that we add in regarding referencing and acknowledgement of the sewer easement.
Copy. So then with the 16.
Okay, very good. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. This is Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. I have a motion by Bob, second by Ryan. All in favor?
Question, Chuck.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, stand by, stand by.
Sorry, sorry about this. Lance, uh, parking wreck fees included?
Yes.
Yeah, so that was, that was voted, that was a condition as part of the original preliminary overall. It was carried forward as part of all the amendments. So yes.
Thank you.
Okay, ready to move on? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Not opposed. Okay. God bless Fox Ridge.
Hey Chuck, God bless Fox Ridge.
Chuck, real quick, I know Jim Fahy jumped on a little bit later than you. We're gonna offer him that courtesy and I don't know if you still were up to doing that.
Uh, sure, we can do that before we, I apologize to the applicants that are, uh, ahead of us, but let's jump back. We have a real quick issue to talk about with, uh, Jim Fahy and Anthony.
I'm gonna jump off. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, Rocco.
Good night.
Uh, we're going to jump back to, uh, on the other businesses required. Revisiting, uh, Jim Fahy and Venenzi representing, uh, a property at 4691 North Manteeth. Uh, the seeking amendment to the planning board's decision regarding the sanitary or the septic system location as to, our condition as to what has to be done prior to the, the signing of the plans. Jim, are you, uh, you there and you wanna make your case real quick?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the time and I'll, I'll be very brief, cause I know you guys have a half of a long night still ahead of you. Um, I, my summary back to the board, following your approval, um, after our presentation on July 28th. Uh, basically, the, the requirement for the signatures on the septic system by both the DOH and Tyler Ole, the county watershed inspector, is unfairly, um, keeping our clients from starting their project in, in, I feel, a reasonable time. I understand the reasoning behind this originally, um, and it made sense after the presentation, but the, the holdup, and Bill Grove brought this to light afterwards, that the typical process from the DOH is to take up to 14 weeks to review and provide signatures after their, the plan has been submitted. So, um, a full septic plan has been designed and has been presented, brought, shown to the town, uh, as you're showing on your screen right now, uh, including the proposed grading in that steep slope area. So really the, in our discussions the night we presented, I think the two key points, uh, Tyler cautioned the board in an early, uh, conversation or, or email to the, the town to not to approve a site plan prior to having a septic system reviewed. And when I spoke to Tyler in the middle of August, he said, he goes, Jim, I wrote that letter before I saw anything. He goes, since then, I've seen concept plans and I've given Bill, um, my, the feeling that I'm, I'm good with the direction of this. So that's really been put to sleep and talking to Bill on a number of occasions, he feels extremely confident, and I think Bill may be with us here this evening, uh, that this plan has been thought through thoroughly and that it's not going to be a problem getting this approved. So our, what we're hoping the board would do is to take the condition of the signatures off of this. The addition of the septic to the site plan is perfectly acceptable, um, along with your other conditions, but maybe the condition of signatures to be prior to C of O for the house. So get the site plan put together with the grading and the septic as shown in Bill's plans, but holding this up for the signatures is, is really, I think unfairly, um, holding up our clients from starting it. We're gonna basically lose the construction season. Um, so that, that's my argument.
Okay. Where, where Jim or Bill, are you in the process as far as getting the, have you submitted the formal or the final or detailed plans to Tyler and DOH?
Bill, are you with us?
He doesn't appear to be.
Okay, um, my understanding, and this is my understanding, so I can't confirm this, uh, is that Bill sent these out to the, on the 28th to, uh, not only the county but to the DOH. So if you have information that's contrary to that, it's not, not to my knowledge. He sent an email out saying he would, that was, he would be submitting it on the 28th of August.
No, I just wanted to make sure that the process was started and ongoing and, uh, because I think at the time when we made the original, the original, uh, motion, uh, it was just, it was conceptual. It was gonna go to DOH. It hadn't been there yet. He hadn't finalized the plans. And based on that information, I think we were concerned that what if things changed in the review of the DOH and Tyler's ultimate, uh, review, uh, and it would affect both the system itself and possibly its location as well as the grading. I think that was concern, the concern of the board, if I'm speaking for the board. If we're further down the road now, in terms of more assurance that this plan will be approved as drawn or as shown, um, I guess that's why you're asking for us to consider an amendment to our decision.
Exactly.
How's the board feel?
Well, I hate to lose a construction season over a technicality. It doesn't sound like it's substantive. Did you hear me?
They can't, they can't move in until they get the DOH approval. So if the DOH rejects their submission, they're still gonna, they're gonna have to redesign it and submit it again. Submit a new plan. So it's not like they're gonna be living there without adequate waste disposal.
Right.
Well, I think, Chris, I know you weren't sitting in on these meetings, but I think our concern was that the grading is very, uh, it's concerning here also, uh, over top the septic system because it's a steep slope. And I think if, if something changed in the design, it would affect the grading and it would have to, the plan would have to, the actual site plan would have to be revised. And I think that was the concern. So rather than get into a revised plan in the future, again, knowing that it was just sort of preliminarily looked at and preliminarily, uh, accepted, uh, if we're further down the road in terms of having, uh, the details being submitted and the, the DOH is now into the review of this thing and you said it's gonna take 14 weeks, so that you're looking at, uh, three months. So, uh, yeah, that's a long time.
Right. And it, and I think, in, in all respect to the board, you, you had nothing in front of you at that time. I fully understand your decision, but we're now looking at a final plan and we actually have room in there for an expansion, as Bill has shown. So i- if the DOH comes back and wants something to be expanded in, in a minor way, Bill has covered himself in his design. He actually shows you that extra space in his, uh, you see he has one more bench in order to work with. And we talked, we talked that all through. So we're at a whole different place here today than we were in the 28th of July.
Where are you, uh, where are you, Jim, as far as drawing down a building permit?
Uh, plans are done. I'm waiting. Um, I, I haven't submitted anything because of this, um, condition.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman and Board, if I may, this is Lance, this is my big group. I just, I think it's important, just for the record, to reference why the board originally. I know there's been a lot of talk as to some of the reasons why, but I think it's important to reference specifically why. Um, typically we get letters from their office stating they've received something, which you've already referenced to the board, that they had not received at that time. And so the specific comment received from that office, when this application was before the board, and the reason for that condition, I believe, is because they wrote and said, "This office has not yet received plans for onsite wastewater systems for the proposed residence. This office cautions the town in granting any approvals before it has demonstrated that the site can support an onsite system that serves the proposed resident." Again, I'm not suggesting one way or another. I just think it's important to read into the record why at that time the board added that condition as, as it is.
Understood, Lance, and I think I said that at the beginning here and it's, uh, and I also spoke to Tyler and sent me an email explaining why he made that comment. He had yet to see anything. After seeing Bill's concept, he's in good shape. So, I hear you.
I think what we did, we did right at the time, based on the information we had. So now it's, uh, it's a month or so later. So let's, uh, consider what we have in front of us now. Uh, is the board willing to, uh, consider an amendment to, uh, of this condition to make it subject to certificate of occupancy rather than signature, signing of the plans?
Yeah, this is Bob with the new information we have in front of us for sure. Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any, uh, anybody disagree with that consideration? Okay.
Ryan, you were gonna say something.
Ryan?
Yeah, I, I think it, I was gonna say, we're supportive, well, is what Lance said. That if for some reason we get a big, huge change that the DOH for South Street says that this is not appropriate, that, I'm hearing that the, you know, that the applicant is accepting responsibility for that also, that we're not going to, I, I would just make clear that we should not change the site plan because DOH says this is inappropriate, so we're gonna cut some corners and then manipulate the whole site plan. I'm not hearing that. So I'm supportive of moving forward as soon as possible.
Well, and if that would occur, Ryan, uh, he would have to come back with amended plan and go through that process, which would take even more time. So he is, he is, you know, he is doing it at his own risk and, uh, assuming that he can get that approval and he, he can go ahead, at least draw down his building permits and his construction permits and get underway out there. So, uh, I will make a motion that we amend that condition to, uh, read in, in lieu of, uh, the signing of the record, signing of the plans, that it be conditional upon the certificate of, that the certificate of occupancy be held up until the approval is made.
I second your motion.
I'm glad you understood it. I didn't.
For the record, it's, it's condition number six that's previously approved that we're amending.
Yeah, it's contingent on the C of O, right?
Now you tell, now you tell me. Okay. All right. So, uh, that's the, the amend, we're amending condition number six of the original approval. Uh, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good luck, Jim. Good luck, Anthony.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the time tonight.
Thanks, Chuck. Thanks, everybody.
Take care.
All right, we'll go back and with our apologies, go back to, uh, the agenda. Burnell Reif, uh, representing Bertie Lehman, Lehman, owner of property at 4977 Station House Drive, uh, seeking a single-stage site plan approval for landscaping and regrading within the RLD. I think there's also a structured retaining wall involved. So, um, Mr. Reif, I think you're on the line.
Yes, my name is Burnell Reif. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hello, Burnell.
Hi. So concerning Station House Drive, uh, on the south side of the property, between Station House and Walnut Cove, uh, there's a large backyard. What we'd like to do on that side is originally, we had hoped to, uh, take it down to possibly create a walkout basement to the south. But with utilities going in, uh, that cannot happen because the utilities are on the south side. So there are two windows and we'd like to, uh, take some of the existing grates, take it down to the corner of the, uh, there's a small bump out. And from that bump out, possibly put a retaining wall out to the back to, uh, there's like a small fish pond. That will open that room in the basement that you can look out back. Originally, there was a bunch of timbered flowerbeds and things there that we did remove. That's kind of the scope plan on that side. The retaining wall would probably run between 36 and 48 inches. As far as the north side of the property, there is two windows that for egress out of the basement. And now you'd have to crawl through the windows, crawl up a ladder and remove a grate to get out. What we like to do on that side is put a retaining wall in, remove some of that dirt so it can be egressed in, uh, possibly a bedroom in the future.
Okay. Uh, I think the biggest issue, I know it came out of the PRC and I guess it's the biggest concern I had was the, uh, the design and stability of the retaining wall. I think you, uh, provided a hand drawn. And I should say, the applicant has requested a waiver from a professionally prepared plan. So that is, uh, part of the application. Okay. Has, has, Eric, has Chris Jensen looked at this? Do you know?
It was given to him for review. I don't have any comments from him.
Okay.
I tell that he's certainly been aware of the application from the beginning.
And I guess the reason we're looking at it is because of the, the amount of earthwork involved?
Right.
Okay. So, uh, knowing that's the case, I guess that's what we ought to be looking at in terms of making sure that what's intended here, if we understand what's, what they're doing, uh, will not cause any issues. And I'll open it up to the board.
Hey Chuck, this is Bob. I was out there today. I s- I see, I saw what they were doing. Uh, my concern is really they're moving a lot of dirt. Um, and wondering if that one swale at the bottom there is enough to catch. And wondering if that one swale at the bottom there is enough to catch anything that's gonna run off there, the silt fence. Also noticed I mean homeowner or the contractor will be doing it, but it looked like one of the fences or the retaining walls down by the pool was over. I was wondering if that was gonna be included into this also just gonna be left alone. And I'm also interested to see that they all used slate retaining walls, but this is a stone wall, but no big deal there. But just a lot of dirt.
Mr. Reif?
Straight into the lake.
Mr. Reif, do you want to respond to that at all?
So can you repeat that about the retaining wall by the pool? You were wondering if we're doing anything with that?
Yeah, because it looks like it was falling over, falling. It looked like it was being heaped up, that's all. You know, wondering if it's gonna go down that far, your other earth movement.
At this point, I think you're talking the north side of the property. Am I correct? Where the concrete?
It's on Station, it's on Station House. Yeah, it's on Station House Road. Yep.
And is that where the concrete from the pool wraps around towards the top of the house, the driveway? There's a small, like a two, three foot high, just a regular stone retaining wall?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be removed.
Okay.
The plan would be to take that, roughly take that level, the concrete around the pool. And if you notice where the, can enter the pool off of Station House. And?
Yeah, going back.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yep. Yeah, I just, just then concerned about that amount of removal with that steep slope there. If once it's gonna be enough, one of them, because it's straight right down. There's one at the end of that driveway that goes down toward the lake grate for water, but it was clawed, it looked like. But then it's straight to the lake. So I just wanted to make it, one silt fence is gonna be enough for all that removal and work.
Okay, well, I know Lance, you did a review on this. And really, this application comes down to a structure retaining wall and, and construction grading. So I guess we sort of have to lean on our professionals in terms of both Chris and Lance as to, is what's being shown adequate to, to protect the homeowner as well as the neighbors in the lake? Are you there, Lance?
Yes, I am here. Yes, MRB Group did provide a comment letter. You know, it's, it's one of those items where we wanted to see the retaining wall detail. I figured they could provide something to the town for ultimately receive an approval. I think that's important. I think that the silt fence probably should be extended to make sure that it's, it covers the entire excavated area. It looks to me that it's running a little bit short as it runs towards the house. I think I would extend it further just to make sure that any runoff, everything gets caught by the silt fence and doesn't go around the silt fence. We did suggest that the silt fence detail from D E C be provided just to ensure that you're installing it in accordance with the regulations that they govern that. I guess as a follow-up to Bob's comments with silt fence, there is an alternative detail that could be provided where they, they stake straw bales behind it to give it additional support, or do two rows of silt fence, which we've seen done on the lake when we have steep slopes and when we have an area of concern, in which in this case is the drainage swale and the neighboring properties. So they could always provide two rows of silt fence in those areas as shown to further support the silt fence from any runoff that may discharge from that excavated area. I do believe it's important to identify where the excavated material is going. It's not shown, it just shows the area that you're removing it, but I'm not sure where it's being stored. Is it being placed back on the site when it's done? Is it being removed from the site? And if so, where's it going? That needs to be approved by the town. I think it's also important to note where your existing footer drains are, or are they gonna be impacted by this? And maybe you're trying to show them by those red lines. I don't, I don't know. I just, when you're removing dirt of this quantity, those roof leaders go somewhere. I just want to make sure we're not impacting those leaders when the material is removed. And if we are, what are you proposing to do so that we can make sure that we're properly conveying runoff as was originally designed to do?
And I guess the other thing is, while you have it, is make sure you tie down the utility locations because you don't want to be digging into a water line or a gas line.
Right. And I think that was referenced earlier in this conversation that?
Yeah, and you showed as number six on your review. Okay. Erica, what, assuming we give the approval, conditional approval, what permit does the applicant draw down? Is it a, is that a? Site permit?
Yeah, site development permit.
Okay, and that's reviewed by?
Chris Jensen.
Chris Jensen. Okay, so he would look and be concerned about the design of the retaining wall? I assume, in reviewing that application?
I'm not sure, I guess, the extent to which he, he looks at it. He certainly would make sure that it meets some minimum requirements of New York State Building Code.
Well, I just want to make sure somebody has an eyeball on the detail for the wall to make sure it's designed properly. And then, once it's designed, hopefully built according to the design. So I just, obviously, it's not our purview to do that, but we want to make sure that it's, it's looked at somewhere in the process.
Yeah, it definitely would be. And Dale would look at it onsite when it's being constructed.
How's everybody feel about a second row of silt fence? Is it possibly a good idea? Belts and suspenders, right? And as far as the, as far as the removal of the earthwork, Mr. Reif, I think your note said something about it'd be taken off-site except for a small amount to be left for, I guess, some final grading. Is it leaving the town?
Do you want it?
Do you want it?
Yeah. Do you want it?
Oh.
It is leaving the town.
Anybody have a hole in their backyard? Okay, so you're not planning on dumping it anywhere on the site or anywhere in, in close proximity to the lot? Okay.
No, there, on the south side of the property, there is kind of a gully in the lawn, a kind of a low spot. We probably utilize some of it in there. The rest be hauled off-site and out of the town of Canadaigua, for your information. So on the north side of the property, that would all be hauled off-site. And as far as the silt fence, do you have a preference, two rows versus one row and straw bales?
Lance?
No, I don't. I think, I think the concern I heard was, one, is it got the capacity to handle it? I think it does. But I think what we typically require when we have concerns is a two-row or the staked with a straw bale. I think either would be appropriate in this location. I would just suggest that whatever version you go with, you provide us with an associated detail from the D E C website so that they have references to the measure that's being proposed.
Okay.
Again, I think being so close to the lake, a belt and suspenders type application would be appropriate because if you do have a breach in the silt fence, there's some, some backup there to keep it from going any further off-site. Okay, Board, anything else you want to talk about regarding, I guess the other thing, obviously, is making sure you get the property stabilized. When were you planning on doing the work? Will you be able to get it done and seeded before winter?
As cold as it was the past few mornings, I can't guarantee that. But, you know, we'd like to. Depends a lot on when we can get started here. We do one phase at a time, say start on the south side of the property. If we run into winter, which that side wouldn't take long, weather turns nasty, we quit and wait till spring.
Okay. That's a good point. I think, I think if you phase the thing, two-phase it, rather than having the whole property torn up, if you do the south side first, get that stabilized, and then move to the north side and work on that, I think that would, you'd have less area exposed. And that would, that would be good. Board members, anything else? I keep talking here, but I'm just, whatever comes out of my head.
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Given all the things we talked about?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Alrighty. Lance, were you able to take down all the concerns we had? I think we were concerned about the wall detail. We were concerned about having some sort of backup system for the silt fence, either a second row or a hay bale system according to standards that are related to that type of construction. I think Mr. Reif stated that the dirt would be, the excavation would be moved off-site. I think we should ask that it be a two-phase construction that the south side be done and stabilized and then move on to the north side. So if that could all be included in our, in our action, that would be appreciated.
Yep, I can, so you want those as additional conditions, Chuck? Findings that we've discussed. So for example, I definitely have the double roll of silt fence or the state straw bale, and I'll get the appropriate name to reference. As per the D E C manual, is to be installed where the silt fence locations are shown. That would be a condition. Six, the dirt removal, it's our, I would put something along the fact that it's understanding that dirt is to be removed from the site. That's to be approved by the town. The location is to be approved by the town, if in the town. And then seven, you mentioned the two phases. I didn't, I didn't, I can make that a condition.
Uh, yeah, if you would, that it'd be, be done in phases, either side of the house. And I just want to make sure somebody gets a look and approves of the wall detail. Because that's, that's a major part of this project, is the construction of a wall. And if, and if, as Eric said, it's part of the site plan or site permit, site, you know, site permit, then all well and good, Chris will get a look at it when he reviews that.
Good.
Alrighty, so since I did all the talking, I will make the motion. We approve a resolution for Burnell Reif, representing Bernie Lehman. He owns property at 4977 Station House Road, approving a single-stage site plan to allow for the regrading and landscaping and construction of retaining wall on, on the subject property. Do I have a second?
And that motion includes a waiver of professionally prepared site plan?
I didn't say that? Oh.
No, that, I was, I was gonna add that, you know, put that in here somewhere. Yeah, that would make it nine conditions. I apologize. I didn't have that one in there.
Okay. Given those nine conditions, I made a motion. I got a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Chuck, this is John. Who's the second?
Bob.
Bob.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Mr. Reif, good luck out there. Hope you get it done before, hope you get it done before the snow flies.
You never know.
All right. Moving right along. We have an application from Costic Engineering and Hamlin Architects, representing Richard and Elise Brovitz, owners of property at 5265 Benteeth Drive. And they're seeking a single-stage site plan approval to tear down and rebuild a detached garage. They did go to the Z B A last week. And they got approval, I assume. Otherwise, they wouldn't be here tonight. So, yeah, is someone there representing Costic or?
Yeah, this is Jay Harris Maxwell with Hamlin Architects. And we're with the team representing Dick and Elise Brovitz. The project has been for this board before, under a different project name. And the actual main house was before you last year, which is actually under construction now. This application is dealing with the detached garage at the back end or the east end of the property. We have a detached garage right now that is going to be demoed. And the proposed is going to be a two-story storage bar structure, as you see on the screen right now. The house is about 15 by 30, and the architectural style is in keeping with the primary residence on the property, has a kind of a contemporary-looking Cape feel to it, natural elements of stone, some wood siding and asphalt shingles. And, you know, we tried to look at the lakeside guides, shoreline guidelines, but one of the features that this house is so far off the lake that really, even though we try to apply those, or they're just kind of not applicable because it's so far, you can't see it from the lake. But we try to keep in keeping with the rest of the design of the property. As far as the location and site plan-related items, I think Evan's gonna have to talk to the technical details of it. So I'll probably turn that over to him now and let him explain a little more with some comments that have come back from MRB as well.
Sure. So this is Evan Gaffel with Costage Engineering. So as Jay said, you know, the footprint is gonna remain basically in the same position, which keeps it away from the creek. The S, the, the roof will be, the sheet flow, the rain will be captured by gutters and downspouts and be daylighted to the ground via splash blocks. You know, and I think with the roof area, there is a berm adjacent to the creek. So the flow is going to move kind of north and south and be able to dissipate into the ground. Some other site-related topics would be, you know, we meet the, we're still under the building coverage. We're at 9.6% with this building and the overall lot coverage is at 22.5, 125 is allowed. Lance, I did receive your comment letters, letter, and I don't see anything that we cannot address and that can be done quickly. Other than that, I think Jay spoke that, you know, this is situated back in a forested area. The Levi's garage blocks the views and the house itself kind of blocks where it is. The primary structure of the house is taller than this, so, you know, it will be lower behind it. And I think also, we have received some letters of support from the neighboring properties. So that's, that's an overview on my end.
Okay. Board members, are you, do you remember this application for the, the house itself? I guess it's been here, it's been before us recently, and then I think about a year or so before that on another type of house. But any, any event, we're talking the garage tonight, so let's focus on that. Flaplane location that is shown with the creek. Wetlands? Yeah. Go ahead, Bob.
My only question is, I went out and looked at it.
My only, my only question is, I, I went out and looked at it, the other, um, and my only question is to the setbacks. Does it fall within the pre-existing? They actually are moving it away from that one corner that was on the lot line, and moving it a little bit thing to the creek, but the creek is dry now, so that's what I was kind of wondering how the zoning and setbacks went for Pat.
Eric, can you, can you address that?
A number of times, and actually the previous owner and Chris Nadler and their attorney at the time kind of went over this a bunch of times. They were granted variances in 2013, but they weren't conditioned specifically enough to be held kind of to the plans at that time. And so essentially, they will run with the property or have run with the property. So what they're proposing to do is in line with those variances granted in 2013. And so, to the extent that they do run in line with that, there was obviously the height variance one. But so they're in line with those variances 2013. It's not necessarily relating to there being a pre-existing non-conformity.
Did that answer your question, Bob?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. How does the board feel about shoreline guidelines? We got at least mentioned them, we, and I'm mentioning them. Again, I sort of agree with the applicant. It sort of sits back in the woods. I don't think there's anything they can do or have to do that relates to...
You can't even see it. Once the house is built, you won't see it.
Do it, yeah.
Right. I agree. I don't think it's, I don't think it's applicable in this.
Okay, we, we can at least sign off that we talked about it.
Yeah, I would like to add this. Chuck, this is Ryan. If I remember this property, it's pretty tight down there, but along Menteeth, I remember discussing in a few visits, there was Japanese knotweed, I think, infestations down there. Can the, do you guys, can the architect speak to that, along that berm that's along the creek? There was that berm that was there, and there was an infestation of Japanese knotweed, an invasive species.
Yes, that berm is still there, but I think Evan's gonna have to speak more to the species order remedy.
So I'm not aware of any Japanese knotweed. It's not been brought to my attention. I know the plan was to kind of weed out some of the other invasive species and replace them with more native species, so that, you know, that, that landscape plan was approved with the house and would still be applicable to the site.
Yeah, I remember, I remember with the site plan approval, we were concerned about that bank, making sure it remains stabilized, that the vegetation on it would be there. We were also concerned, of course, about the creek or the, yeah, the Menteeth Creek possibly overflowing, and there has been flooding in that area before. I made sure the applicant was aware of that condition and would not be surprised if the water came up to the front step. So I, you know, I don't know if we talked about Japanese, Japanese invasion.
If we can, if we can, you know, Lance, the engineers spoke that they're gonna remove the invasives, great. If we could just add that in, that'd be cool as a, as a condition. And I do want to just be hot, two applications or three before, there was, it's common that Menteeth will have these gully washers, these large rain events, and there were times when we, we went to that site, and there was material deposited behind that garage that was evidence of a, a large storm event, bringing material up and over that bank, up against the back of that garage. So Lance, my question is for you, is does this plan satisfy all of those issues with the stormwater events, in your professional opinion?
Lance, you're muted.
I, I'm sorry. I had, I was getting feedback from somebody else. I didn't know what, I think I heard Ryan's comment. I don't see any drainage issues with this specific design that's before the board today. We did ask that the leaders be shown on the plans, so that we can make sure that they're not discharging in a manner that wouldn't be approvable by the town. I'm sorry, Lance, to interrupt you, but just to go back, in years, in, in applications before, the stormwater events that would come down Menteeth would sometimes bring significant debris over the bank into the back of that lot, and was deposited behind the garage. So, in your opinion, I just want to make sure that we talk about the fact that this is a delicate site, and there could be a storm event that can back up material, water, debris, to the back of that garage. And so just kind of for the record, we're just talking about it, so that the applicant's aware that we've explored this, that everything is going to be safe for anybody that's back there, any materials that are in the garage can eventually become part of the lake. So... Yes, so Ryan, if I recall correctly, on the last project that was before us regarding this same site, the board had very similar concerns, obviously because it's in the flood, flood zone, floodplain there. And so there was a note or a condition that was added to the plans that said, "The site plans are to be revised to add a note stating that the applicant is aware that the proposed property is subject to flooding, and released to town a candidate with many liability related thereto." That was a condition on the original approval associated with the, the site plan in the house. I believe tonight's approval is regarding the garage. I don't know if that needs to be reiterated again associated with this, but this lot, this property and the building of the house have that condition already on it. Okay, I just wanted to explore that. Make everybody aware, I'm ready to move forward.
Chris, since you're still with us, do you think we should double up on this, on that condition?
It does not seem he's with us any longer.
Oh, okay.
For the board's record, that was a condition from the November 26, 2019 approval.
Yep, I remember, and it was an acknowledgement that we put on the plan, which was, I think, good policy.
And this is not, this is not an amendment to that. This is its own application, so I think that, that app, that, that condition, and again, I'm not an attorney, but that condition, I would think, would still be applicable as it relates to the site in that plan itself.
Better safe than sorry. Let's put it on. Okay. Alrighty. Anybody else on the board? I guess Jay, the second floor is going to be storage, right? All storage is.
Correct.
The only utilities in the garage would be electric?
Correct.
Power? Okay.
Did I show a generator next to it? Why was that?
The plan is to have a whole-house generator at the site. Right now, the, the size of that has not been determined, you know, given the size of the house and how that's derived, I don't know. That's going to be more the contractor and electrician determining how big that is. So I'm just right, there are site plan, we're showing it.
Yeah, so that generator is going to serve the house, not just, just the garage.
That's correct.
It's just, it's just, that's the location of it.
Yeah, because there's really no room up near the primary structure, you know, where the septic field is and the house and the driveway. Just no place to put it where it can be out of visibility.
Okay, just make sure it's elevated.
Yeah, you know, I gotta say, yeah, we, can we please, yeah, we're gonna add that note to the, I mean, that is literally where that material showed up, so, you know, it's engineered, the liability's off of us, but heads up on that. That's a, that's intense.
Okay, put it up on a pad or something, but we're not requiring that, but just, our humble opinion. The driveway itself, I was trying to figure out where the blacktop ended, stone started, or stone ended and blacktop started. New driveway configuration, and now that new driveway is all going to be what material?
It's proposed crushed stone.
Okay, so there's no blacktop on the property? No asphalt?
No.
Okay, so it's just the, I guess the access road?
Yeah, the, yeah, the access road terminates right there.
Okay, and that's the end of the blacktop. Okay.
Yep.
While you folks are deliberating a little more, thinking of more questions, let me go through the, the bookkeeping here. The county planning board had no formal action on it. They did review it. As we stated, the ZBA gave a variance for the height, the one-foot height variance. And I don't know, Lance, did you have that on your comments or as a condition that that variance be noted on the site plan?
Yes, condition number six references that all variance approved by the ZBA are to be detailed on the plans, but I do believe I need to probably, I think I need to add it to our findings as well.
Okay. Let's see, Jim Fletcher had no comments. We talked about Lance's review. ECB, again, was that reviewed on the 3rd of September, Eric? Did they have any concerns? You recall?
I believe it, it should have been reviewed that same day, but no, I think they actually recommended that it be approved.
Okay. All right. So anybody else on the board have any questions, comments, concerns? If not, we'll move to Seeker. It's a type-two action, so it's, I will consider, consider a double up here, a bundling of the Seeker and the site plan approval if somebody wants to make that motion.
I'll make the motion to bundle the CPN 20055, the single-stage site plan approval, and the Seeker amendment with, I'm trying to see the conditions. My plant, my computer's jumping.
Seven, seven conditions.
Yes.
We, we added one, which is regarding the flood, the flood comment from the November meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Additional comments the board wanted.
Did Ryan want to have the invasive species as a condition or just put in the findings?
Ryan, Lance, what do you think?
I don't understand what, what they could do as a condition.
Remove, remove the invasive species and plant native species. The engineer said that they were gonna do that.
Oh, to switch out, actually switch out the plants?
Yeah, like actually remove, manage those invasive species as part of their lot.
Okay.
Yeah. And the reason that's important is because as soon as they go to seed and they go into the lake, they're gonna make their way all around the lake to everybody's lakefront.
I'm, I, I just didn't know what they could do about it, so that's, that's a great idea.
Yeah. I guess my only question is, is who's going to verify that that was done? Code enforcement, code enforcement, just like we do all the plantings and everything else. Right. Does the code enforcement officer know what is invasive species is or not? I, I don't know if the code enforcement knows what a tree is, what kinds of trees. We, we never asked those questions. I don't want to get into that. Okay, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that we're putting it on the town and I don't... That's right, and we can leave it that. The town has that training. But that's a whole nother conversation to be held, that plays else.
I agree. I guess, Ryan, the only comment I have on that is, given the limits, limits of disturbance that are affected to this plan, which is just around the garage, does that make sense? Or would that be, would that have better been on the house site to have that, that condition or comment?
Yeah, if I remember correctly, as that driveway came in, that, the, the infestation was back there near the garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sure if you were, moreover, were near the creek, this outside the limits of the disturbance of this plan. That's, that was my only concern.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may, would the condition be that the town is requiring the applicant to remove all invasion species? Or are we simply saying that, as, as discussed at tonight's meeting, that applicant has agreed to remove all invasion species from the site? Yes, that's, that's, that's what I would prefer. That, I'm just, I'm just, that's what the, that's what the applicant said. We didn't say that. That's what they said.
Is that, is that within the project limits, though? I mean, the site is pretty big. How far, I mean, we're not gonna go way back.
You said it. I didn't say.
With it, with it, within the, you know, the project limits, I don't think, way in the back that, up the creek.
Ryan, you, you were specific to the Japanese on the bank, right?
Yeah.
Can we, can we be specific and say the, the Japanese invasion along the bank?
Oh, sure. Sure. Now we, sure. That's, it's, it's the same weed that Tom Schwartz was concerned about, and once it takes over a parcel, it's very, very hard to manage. And, and when, we talked about it with the last applicant that owned the house previous, and they said that they were gonna manage it, and, you know, it's, it's, this is a responsibility. We talked about, you know, so I, I'm, I'm trying to be as loose as possible, but I think it's important with that, so close to the lake, that stuff can get around the lake very quickly.
Okay.
Very important.
So Karen, you're willing to amend your motion to include that condition?
Yes, I would like to include that condition that they agreed to.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. We're, we're in the middle of a motion. I, I'll, I'll, let me get a second on this first, then we'll have a discussion. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
I got it interrupted in the middle of it. Did you all hear it?
Okay, so we have a motion a second. I see that Mr. Brovitz is willing, like to make a comment. Go ahead, sir.
Just trying to understand, so are we limiting this to this Japanese weed?
Japanese knotweed.
Japanese knotweed in the rear area of the property, the berm that's right around the garage area.
On the site. Right, that's, isn't that? The, the berm area that's around, that's on the property, it's, it's in, it's in your very best interest to get rid of that stuff.
Okay, so, so there's this Japanese knotweed on the berm?
Yeah, and if it's, and if it's not there, then I'll, you know what I mean, then, then maybe it's been managed already.
Can we make it clear that you're talking about the berm area, just so we know what we?
Is it the berm or the bank?
Well, I get, so I guess I'd have to go down there and look, because that stuff is so invasive, it can take over the whole, you know what I mean, like, I don't, I don't know where it is. Now I don't have a documentation of that. So Ryan, are you saying the property, that the entire property, to be cleared of Japanese knotweed? Or are we simply saying the project area as shown on the plans, which is the work area, which is, for the most part, in all intents and purposes, the rear portion of the site? I, I guess I'd have to, I guess, I'm, I'm sorry to make this so difficult. I, I thought that the applicant said that the, the engineer said that the applicant agreed to manage invasive species and remove them and plant native species. And I'm just, that's all. I just want to hold them to the word that they said, that's all, whether it's...
And I, I think that was approved in the previous application for the house, and that was with our, you know, that applied to our landscape plan that we proposed. So any, you know, that wasn't going way back into the property, that was, you know, addressing the new landscape around what we're showing, but you know, the, the bank is, the, the berm is most of the property. I mean, you can see it, so.
Right.
Lance, what, how does that condition currently read, please?
Yeah, please.
You, you stated it, and I think we said, you gave us two options, and we picked the second option, and what was that option?
I think, I think if we, bear with me as I'm pulling it together, I, I have something along the lines of, as discussed, but as discussed tonight, at tonight's plan... along the lines of, as discussed, but as discussed tonight at tonight's planning board meeting, and agreed upon by the applicant, all invasive species, i.e. Japanese knotweed, in the, within the project limits, were gonna be removed from the site.
Are going to be removed, right?
Are going to be removed from the site. As discussed at tonight's planning board meeting, and agreed upon by the applicant, all Japanese knotweed within the project limits, is what I had, was going to be removed from the site. So let's get even easier, I'm sorry, can we make it easier, Lance? All Japanese knotweed will be managed for, to be removed, because you may never get rid of it again. It may, you may never get rid of it. You, it's, so. Will be managed. They gotta manage it, or else it will take over the property.
Yep. Sounds like, sounds like it's also gotta be located. So it's gotta be located and managed. Okay, so that's, that, that's fine. Okay, very good. Did I have a second to Karen's motion?
Right, or Bob?
Okay, I did.
Bob seconded it.
All right, is everybody on board? Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
We think so.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Okay, you got it. Thanks for your patience, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, good luck out there.
Thanks.
Jumping across the line into board business, we have the minutes from the September 8th meeting that was prepared by Lisa Record. They got circulated, I believe, in the last day or two. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at them and are prepared to, to approve them or at least make a motion. Do I have a motion for the minutes?
Yeah, I'll just say, I have not had a time to look at them. I think they just came out today to me, I just got them today.
You want to postpone the?
I, I would like to be able to look at them, and I didn't look at.
Okay, all right, how about we push them back to the next meeting, so we'll have two minutes, two minutes, two sets of minutes. We'll have two sets of minutes to look at our next meeting, okay, guys? All right, we have no referrals from town board, recommendations from the ZBA, we're down to a couple of letters of credit, people want some money back. We'll first do John Schneider, Schneifer, owner of property 4609 Misty Hill Drive, and he wants a release of his full security amount, which was $5450. And also, we'll take together a request by Royal Car Wash for, I guess it's the final release of $19,778. I think Royal is really looking nice out there. Hopefully, everybody agrees, I think it's a.
Great car wash, I've used it a couple of times already.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, it looks like the, the other one, the competition on three, five, 520 will be nice looking, too, so.
Yeah.
We are the town of car washes. There shouldn't, there shouldn't be a dirty car running around down the Cantadega. All righty, do I have a motion to accept both of those?
Motion to accept both of those.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none. Okay, they can get their money back. All right, we're almost done, folks. Training, you, you have the note that sexual harassment has to be done by the 1st of October.
Yeah, sorry, that was my wife getting my children to brush their teeth before they go to bed. This is right.
I thought she heard, I thought she heard sexual harassment, she wiped out.
Right, I thought she was telling you to brush your teeth before you go to bed.
I think she was pointing at you. All righty, so make sure you get that done. Eric sent out today an email listing some online training you can do. So here we are, almost in October, so we got three months to get the training done. If you don't know how many credits you need, check with Eric. So let's make sure we get that done. All right, October 13th meeting, looking, from what I see, it's a really small agenda. If you, well, we can talk about it, I don't want to spend a lot of time. We can maybe move something from the 27th, which is getting kind of heavy, up to the 13th, and specifically, Eric, I'm thinking about the two Venezia houses, possibly.
Yeah, I think there was also one harder for Bobbery, that when we reviewed it in PRC, required a variance for lot coverage.
Okay.
They did reduce that to eliminate the need for a variance, so theirs is just site plan approval now, too.
Okay, and then you got Grove for Tate also, right, for 13th.
What about Chuck and Eric, can you speak to the Ortloff project that's not complete application that we, I keep seeing?
I don't know why you're still seeing that, it was only a zoning board thing. Well, actually, initially it was for a use variance, but they eliminated the need for that, and then it was just to go to the zoning board. It was at the zoning board last week, and it did get a variance approval for 60-something foot setback to the stream there on Butler Road. So as far as planning and zoning is concerned, it's essentially set, barring any changes in the plans.
Okay, thanks. Okay, anybody else on the board have any questions? Okay, if not, I think we'll reconvene on the 13th of October. Again, we'll do it online, and Eric, is there any reason why we can't continue to go online? That we're not violating any rules of Governor Cuomo?
No, I'm not aware of any reason why.
Okay, so we'll keep, I, I think for the most part, we, we are able to get things done this way. I'm sorry, tonight's meeting took a little longer, but it does get a little confusing when everybody's talking. So we'll do it on the 13th, same, same time, same bat station, and Eric, or rather, Brian, I'm ready for your, take yourself off mute and give us a motion.
Looking to approve, adjourn this meeting right now.
Right now.
Right now. About a second? I'll second, I'll second. So Ryan made the motion, I seconded, and all in favor? Aye.
Right now.
Buddy.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.